Ladies and gentlemen, please have a seat. I ask you, before we start today's event, that if you'd be so kind to take your phones and put them on silent. You can still record and take photos as you wish. Good evening, my name is Frank Bonet. Buenas tardes, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Frank Bonet. Soy su maestro de ceremonia. I'm your master of ceremony. Bienvenidos a la Ciudad de Lawrence, la reina del marimac, la inauguración especial del alcalde. Welcome to the city of Lawrence, queen of the marimac special, mayoral inauguration. I would like for you to all stand up and allow me to introduce your mayor-elect and soon-to-be mayor, Brian A. De Peña and his wife Delaney De Peña. You may have a seat. Thank you. Joining us tonight are the following dignitaries. Con nosotros esta noche están los siguientes dignitarios. Se encuentran aquí con nosotros, representando los vicinas de la Congresita Laurie Trahan, representing the office of Congressman Laurie Trahan, senior outreach director, la directora superior de divulgación, Joseline De León. A big friend of Lawrence, your state senator, Barry Feingold. A representante estatal, your state representative Frank Moran, and state representative Marcos Devers. From the Essex County Sheriff, el aguacil del condado de Essex, Kevin F. Kopinger. From the city council president, el presidente del Consider Lawrence, Mark LaPlante. Vice-presidenta, vice-president of the Lawrence City Council, Estela Reyes. Concejal Pavel Payano. Concejal Giovanni Rodriguez. Concejal Selena Reyes. Se encuentran con nosotros, we also have members of the school committee, el comité escolar, Lawrence School Committee members, Enrique Matos. Patricia Mariano. Jonathan Guzmán. From Lawrence School Committee elect members to start their term in 2021, Lenín Roa. 2022, I'm sorry, 2022. Y con esto le doy la bienvenida a la juramentación del alcalde. I welcome you to today's mayoral inauguration for Brian A. De Peña. To begin this patriotic event, before we do our national anthem, I'd like to introduce to you one of Lawrence's newest, para comenzar el evento patriótico, introduzco a uno de los más nuevos de Lawrence, city clerk, escribana Diane LeBlanc.
Good evening. Mayor-elect De Peña, elected official, and to everyone that is here, it is an honor to be with you for this inauguration ceremony and on behalf of the City of Lawrence City Clerk's office to welcome you. I have only been your city clerk for a short time, not quite three months, but in that short time, I have seen your passion, your commitment, and your love for this wonderful city. Your city, and I feel blessed to be a part of it. In just a little while, I will have the great privilege of administering the oath of office to Brian A. De Peña, who will become the 61st mayor of the great city of Lawrence. Each of you will be witness to the peaceful transition of power. This is how our American democracy works. This is truly a historic occasion, and each of you is now part of that history. God bless you and God bless the city of Lawrence.
So let me just say something because she looks a lot more prettier in person than in the photos that I've seen. But we do have an elect council with us. Stephanie. Stephanie, say hi. I'd like to call one of Lawrence's own hero, retired Army Sergeant First Class Jamie Melendez, calling to post the colors. Sergeant de veterano de la Ciudad de Lawrence, Jamie Melendez.
Good evening. Colors, post! If you would please stand.
Please remain standing. Tonight, we have the honor of having, hoy tenemos el privilegio de tener a Kiavete Guzmán, who will sing the national anthem. Ella cantará el himno nacional.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight for the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave for the land of the free and the home of the brave? Thank you.
Colors, post!
Now, maybe seated. You can tell I'm a little new at this master of ceremony business, and so I failed to recognize three individuals. With us tonight is Chief, Police Chief Orie Vasque, and Fire Chief Brian Moriarty, and somewhere around here is my good friend Vivian Marmol. She is a Greater Lawrence Technical School Committee member. Vivian! Okay, to lead us off in today's opening invocation, I'd like to call two individuals from the Seventh Baptist, Seventh-day Adventist Church. Para guiarnos en la inauguración de esta apertura, la invocación, llamo a dos pastores, Elías Zabala y el pastor Dionysis Olivo.
Padre de amor, agradecemos esta linda ocasión cuando se inaugura el liderazgo de Brian De Peña como mayor de esta ciudad. Programos, señor, que tú bendigas a esta ciudad a través de tu liderazgo. Tu paz pueda llenar todos los rincones de Lawrence. Pero, señor, sobre todo queremos presentártelo a él. Que le des la sabiduría de Salomón para que sepa cómo llevar adelante los negocios de la ciudad. Que le dé la valentía de David para que pueda defender los asuntos correctamente sin miedo a nada. Que le des la determinación de Leazar para que cuando tenga que tomar determinaciones, lo haga, señor, firme y fuerte. Pero, sobre todo, señor, que le des la compasión que solamente Cristo Jesús puede dar para que gobierne con simpatía, para que pueda identificar a cada quien como una persona. Y que, señor, lo haga justo para que todo lo haga de acuerdo a tu voluntad. Gracias, señor, en nombre de Jesús.
Let us pray. Our gracious God, as we come in this occasion where Brian De Peña is being inaugurated as the mayor of this city of Lawrence, we ask, Lord, that this moment will serve as a dedication of a life for public service. We ask for wisdom. We ask for determination, leadership, and compassion. Bless him. Bless his family. Bless everyone that come across his office. And more so, bless the city of Lawrence. Every public official. Everyone, Lord, that has an address within the zip codes of this city. We ask, Lord, that we'll receive the blessing from the leadership and for the love and compassion in the time in which Brian will serve. Thank you for allowing him to have this opportunity. And we pray that this will be a blessing to many. We pray in your name. Amen.
For tonight's inaugural dedication, I call on first responder, community activist, and a friend to of all, to us all. Para la dedicación inaugural de esta noche, hago un llamado a un socorista, activista comunitario, y un amigo de todos nosotros. Señor William Castro.
Good evening, everyone. Bienvenidos a todos, amigos, familiares, hermanos. First, I would like to, every day for you guys to set a prayer for our first responders as they lead a city into safety. And I would like to set aside a moment of silence to our fallen heroes as follows. U.S. Army Sergeant, Major Jose Ayala. U.S. Marine Sergeant, Jonathan Rosario Pichardo. Johani Pichardo. U.S. Marine Private Anthony Muñoz. To all the COVID victims and the families, a moment of silence. Please stand up. Thank you.
Just would like you to notice the wreath that you see on the side of the stage. And so the red, white, and blue wreaths represents Johani, Anthony, and Sergeant Major Ayala. And the wreath that is in white and blue, the colors of Lawrence, represent COVID victims or first responders as well. To pray for those three individuals and for our first responders and our COVID victims, I ask for Diakono Cristino Infante to lead us on a prayer. Please stand.
Lord God, in whom all find refuge, we appeal to your boundless mercy. Grant a kindly welcome to your kingdom, the souls of all your servants, just mentioned Jose, Johani, and Anthony. We pray for all active-duty military personnel, veterans, first responders. Lord, we give you thanks for them, for their service and love. And no one has greater love than this, to lay down his life for his friends. Almighty Living God, look with compassion upon the sorrowful condition of all your children who suffered because of this COVID-19 pandemic. Relieve the pains of the sick. Give strength to those who have died and peace to them. Strength to those who care for them. Through this time of tribulation, grant that we may all find comfort in your mercy for love. This moment, Almighty God, we pray for Brian Peña, Lawrence elected mayor who is entrusted to God our city. May he be enabled by your powerful protection to discharge his duties with honesty and ability. We pray to you, who are Lord and God, forever and ever. Amen.
You may be seated. The family of Johani Rosario Pichardo could not be with us here tonight. Actually, they've been running really, really strong for the last four or five days in veteran events, and they really need a rest. Mayor, they send their congratulations and their blessings to you. The family of Anthony Muñoz is here, and I would like for them to stand up so we can acknowledge. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a time where you are expecting, this is where we are going to administer the oath of office. Señoras y señores damas y caballeros, para administrar el juramento del calvo, is city clerk, escribana Diane LeBlanc.
I'm going to raise your right hand, your left hand on the Bible, and repeat after me. I,
I,
state your name.
Brian De Peña.
You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. You solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Solemnly swear I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
The Constitution of a commonwealth in Massachusetts.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of Lawrence.
And the charter and the ordinance of the city of Lawrence.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge my duties as mayor during my service therein, so help me God.
That will faithfully, honestly, and impartially discharge my duty, a major duty, in my service there, so help my God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
You may be seated. Actually, you'll probably be standing up again. As you may see from this program, we have many people of faith on the stage. Como pueden ver por el programa, queríamos incluir muchas personas de fe. At this moment, we're going to call someone to pray for Mayor Brian A. De Peña. That sounds really good, doesn't it? And his administration. I call upon, en este momento para orar para el alcalde Brian De Peña y su éxito de su administración, introduzco a la pastora Milagros Gruñón de la Iglesia de Community Cruz.
Good evening. It is a pleasure to be here today. Buenas noches. Es un placer estar aquí para orar por nuestro próximo alcalde de nuestra ciudad. Comienzo en inglés y lo haré segundo en español. Sovereign God and Heavenly Father, tonight we have come to this place for the transferring of power from the majority of our city. Today, we are here before you, your servant presence, invoking your blessing for the honorable Mayor Brian A. De Peña. So that just as you were with your servants, David, Moses, and Joshua, so, oh God, be with him. We ask you for wisdom, intelligence, discernment, and humility to lead our people to a better place. May he listen to your voice to make the best decisions and raise the image of our city. Lord, keep him from all the circumstances that may arise to weaken his judgment. Guide him to walk according to your statutes, commandments, law, and ordinance. May your goodness and mercy follow him all the days of his life and term. You, oh Lord, have given him the power to enact laws and decrees for this community to live safe and secure. Please give him the strength and wisdom to guide his decision, and may he always put the love of this city first. Surround him with people from all walks of life and from different ethnic backgrounds. Bring him people of high moral character and spiritual maturity. Among the many voices he may hear on a daily basis, may he hear your voice above all of them. Ask, as we stand here, we ask you to help us and help him to guide the city in safety, to be a leader among the leaders, especially in the times of crisis. Lord, inspire him and speak to him through and by the power of your Holy Spirit. Soberano Dios y padre celestial. En esta noche hemos venido a este lugar para la transferencia de poder del alcalde de nuestra Ciudad de Lawrence. Hoy estamos delante de tu soberana presencia, presentándote a nuestro honorable alcalde Brian A. De Peña, para que así como estuviste con David, Moisés, y Josué, así, oh Dios, estés tú con él. Te pedimos sabiduría, inteligencia, y discernimiento, y sobre todo humildad para que él pueda dirigir a este pueblo, que él pueda escuchar tu voz para tomar las mejores decisiones y levantar la imagen de nuestra ciudad. Señor, guárcale de todas las circunstancias que se puedan producir que no son agradables en tu presencia. Guíale a que han de conforme a tus estatutos, mandamientos, ley, y ordenanzas. Que el bien y la misericordia tuya, oh Dios, no se aparten de él. Porque le ha otorgado poder para que promulgue leyes y decretos para que este pueblo viva seguro y protegido. Por favor, dale fuerzas y sabiduría y guía sus decisiones. Que siempre ponga el amor por este pueblo de primero. Ródea-lo de personas de todos ámbitos de la vida y diferentes orígenes. Traele personas de alto carácter moral y también madurez espiritual. Entre las muchas voces que él escuche todos los días, que pueda escuchar tu voz, oh Dios, sobre todo... que pueda escuchar tu voz, oh Dios, sobre todas ellas. Mientras buscamos seguridad y guianza en nuestros gobernadores, especialmente en momentos de crisis, señor, inspíralo y háblale a través de tu Espíritu Santo. Amen. Oramos en el nombre de Jesús nuestro Señor. Amen.
You may be seated. As you noticed, we have a couple of changes to the program. But I'd like to call a young lady from Lawrence. Quiero llamar a una señorita de Lawrence, de la Escuela Superior de Lawrence High School, para cantar "God Bless America." I'd like to call a young lady, una señora Jocelyn Rodriguez.
God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with full. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with full. God bless America, my home sweet home. From the mountains to the prairies, to the oceans wide with full. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America. God bless America. God bless America,
Hello? Hello? All right. I think we got mic check, mic change. How about that performance? One more time, round of applause. All right, to introduce Mayor Brian De Peña, here's our guest and your friend. Y haciendo la introducción del alcalde Brian De Peña, aquí nuestro orador invitado y amigo, representante Frank Moran.
Yo no soy artista. All right, I think I have it. I'm a short guy, so I gotta make sure this thing's right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us on this very special day as we come together, not only here, but collectively as a city, to celebrate the inaugural swearing ceremony of my friend and our dear friend Brian De Peñas. Buenas noches a todos y gracias a todos por acompañarnos este día tan especial, ya que nos reunimos no solo aquí sino colectivamente como ciudad para celebrar el juramento inaugural de nuestro querido amigo, el alcalde Brian De Peña. I have had the distinct honor of knowing Brian for many years, and it is truly a privilege to have the opportunity to stand before you to formally introduce him as the 61st mayor of a fair city. He's taken the great honor of knowing Brian for many years, and it's a real privilege to have the opportunity to stand before you to present him formally as the number 61 of our beautiful city of Lawrence. Like many of you, I have come to know Brian not only as a successful businessman and entrepreneur, but as a family man, a proud immigrant, a pillar of our community, and the epitome of the American dream, the very embodiment of what it means to be a Laurentian. Como muchos de ustedes, he llegado a conocer a Brian De Peña no solo como un exitoso hombre de negocio y emprendedor, sino como un hombre de familia, muy inmigrante orgulloso, un pilar de nuestra comunidad y el epitome del sueño americano. La personificación misma de lo que significa, se lo lorenciano. It is because of this background and his humble beginning that I have the utmost confidence that Brian will fight to ensure that every single resident of Lawrence is provided with the opportunity to succeed in all facets of life through his people-centric vision for our city's future. I would be remiss if I did not also mention one of Brian's most honorable qualities. He's a unifier. Sería negligente de mi parte si no menciono también una de las cualidades más honorables de nuestro alcalde Brian De Peña. Brian De Peña es un unificador. He does not care where you come from or what political party you belong to. He's truly a man of the people who cares deeply for everyone from all walks of life. Our city has gone through many struggles and tragedies in recent years, whether it was the Mermack Valley gas explosion or being disproportionately impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. We have been through so much in such a short period of time, and it is only through togetherness that we will be able to face whatever issues may lie ahead of us. I know that a lot has happened throughout these years' election. We all know that. And I only say this to highlight the urgent need to come together in solidarity, no matter who we may have supported, because even when the campaign ends, we are still neighbors, we're still friends, but more importantly, we are Laurentians. Sé que han ocurrido muchas cosas a lo largo de las elecciones de este año, y lo sabemos. Y solo digo esto para resaltar la necesidad urgente de unirnos en solidaridad, sin importar a quién hayamos apoyado, porque incluso cuando terminan las campañas, somos amigos, somos vecinos, pero más importante, somos lorencianos. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Kendrick Vázquez for his honorable service to our city during his tenure as active mayor. He led us through these unprecedented times with a degree of daphnis and care that not many could have, could have done, when we entrusted to such a role. With that said, I would also like to express my hope and optimism for the De Peña administration. While we all anticipate you achieve great things in the years to come, we also have an even higher expectation that you will leave this city with a personable touch that will move us forward into the future. It goes without saying, but I hope that you know that, I, as well as my colleagues in the Lawrence State delegation, we always be a partner to you so that we may work towards making your ambitious agenda a reality. Whether it be providing high-quality educational opportunities to our students to address the unique needs that they face on a daily basis, both in the classroom and at home, bolstering our city workforce development programming to ensure that everyone is afforded with a working wage to make ends meet, or working with our youth to ensure that they have the ability to become the next generation of civic leaders. You always, always have a trusted ally and a confidant in you, Mr. Mayor. I cannot be proud of you, my friend, and I know that your administration will move mountains to help anyone who contacts your office with any issues, no matter how big or small. No podría estar más orgulloso de ti, mi amigo. Y sabemos que su administración moverá montañas para ayudar a cualquier que se comunique con su oficina con cualquier problema, sin importar grande o qué pequeño sea. A new day is shining on the city of Lawrence, and with it, a brighter future. Un nuevo día brilla en la ciudad de Lawrence, y con él, un futuro más brillante. Please join me in giving our new mayor a round of applause, and thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you here on these momentous occasions. Señores y señoras, les presento a nuestro honorable alcalde, mi amigo, Brian De Peña.
Thank you, thank you. Gracias. First, I want to say thank you for being here, everyone. It's a great moment, not only for me, not only for my family, it's a great moment for the city, for taxpayers, for every neighbor. I want to say thank you, God. I want to say thank you, my wife, Delene De Peña, my mom, my daughter and son, any friends, any person. Bye. It's a great moment for the city of Lawrence, for why reason? Because now the city bought for one mayor, for one city, for us, not for group, not for friends, not for family. Tonight, the very important compromise is may government in transparency, human government. My compromise is keep your neighbor clean, keep the boyer transparent, boyer. Never I increase the taxes for the resident for give benefit one group or small group. I clean every single neighbor in the city. I promise. For many years, residents, neighbor, sit many alleyways in this city, dirty. I promise I clean every alleyway in the city. When somebody visited the city of Lawrence, I promise organize every enter in this city. The city of Florence in this moment don't have any signs, any city have the sign say, "Welcome to the city." Only Lawrence don't have it. My promise tonight is not for small group, it's for everybody in the city. Yo quiero darle las gracias a Dios, primero a mi esposa, a la ciudad de Lawrence, a los voluntarios, a cada uno que hizo posible este momento. Alguien me preguntaba, ¿dónde está tu speech? Porque siempre traen algo escrito, y yo digo, no. Para yo hablar con mi pueblo no es cierto escribir nada. Para yo servirle a mi pueblo, no tengo que dar la excusa de no hablar un inglés perfecto. Does community need a leadership? That's only the community need. It's time for people. Es tiempo de la gente. Yo quiero siempre que ustedes hagan mucho por este servidor. Cometeré errores, pero me cuidaré de ellos. No le prometo ser perfecto, pero sí honesto como enseñó mi padre y mi madre. Me aseguraré de no usar y aprovecharme de los vacíos que la ley en ocasiones no tiene para defender al pueblo, y donde la ley tiene sus espacios en blanco, lo vamos a escribir con honestidad, con decisiones honestas. No vamos a aprovecharla para engañar al pueblo, para abusar de nuestra gente. La puerta del City Hall, a partir de este momento, estarán abiertas. A partir de hoy. A partir de hoy, comenzando todos los viernes, las puertas de la alcaldía van a estar disponibles para que la gente vaya después de medias sin hacer cita. Es un compromiso. Friday, Friday, every Friday afternoon, I keep the city, the office mayor open every Friday afternoon. You know the appointment. Ahora le toca mandar al pueblo. Se acabaron los favores personales. No more, no more personal favor. The city is for our residents, not for small group. Quiero que ustedes sepan que de hoy en adelante se abre una nueva era para Lawrence. Es mi compromiso. Mi eslogan no son solo letras. Es un compromiso. Now is the people's turn. Ahora le toca al pueblo. Dios le bendiga. Dios bendiga los Estados Unidos de América. Dios bendiga la ciudad de Lawrence. God bless America. God bless the city of Lawrence.
Testing, testing. Here we go. You may be seated. Testing. Damas y caballeros, ladies and gentlemen, singing "I Prefer Christ", cantando "Yo prefiero a Cristo", la señora Josefina Infante y Diakonos Kristono Quisino Infante.
Prefiero a Cristo al vano opel. Prefiero su gracia a riquezas sin fin. A casas y a tierras. Prefiero le ser a mi alma fuerte para ti. Y antes que ser re de cualquier nación y en pecado gobernar. Prefiero a mi Cristo sublime don con el mundo no a de da. No quiero el aplauso del mundo falaz. Prefiero en las finas de Cristo servir. La fana del mundo es liviana y fugaz. Prefiero por siempre a Jesús seguir. Más bello que miro en su nivel blanco. Mi Cristo es más dulce aunque la miel. Su paz a mi alma dará el señor. Yo quiero que Cristo me conserve pie. Que antes que ser re de cualquier nación y en pecado gobernar. Prefiero a mi Cristo sublime don con el mundo no a de da. Y antes que ser re de cualquier nación y en pecado gobernar. Prefiero a mi Cristo sublime don con el mundo no a de da. Con el mundo no a de da.
Damas y caballeros, ladies and gentlemen, to lead us into tonight's benediction, para guiarnos en la bendición de esta noche, el pastor Joel Almonó.
Buenas noches. Buenas noches. Thank you. Wonderful answer. En mi campo dicen que la lluvia es símbolo o sinónimo de abundancia y bendición. Y si eso es verdad, a esta nueva administración le irá muy bien, porque hoy sí llovió. El Señor les bendiga a la autoridad electa, en especial a nuestro alcalde Brian De Peña. Almighty God bless in the authority, in especial our mayor, Brian De Peña. El Señor haga resplandecer su rostro sobre todos los ciudadanos residentes en Lawrence y sea propicio a esta ciudad. El Señor alce su rostro sobre nosotros y nos conceda su paz. Please, standing up. Por favor, pongámonos de pies. In the peace of God, who exceed all understanding, keep our hearts and minds in the knowledge and love of God and of His Son Jesus Christ, our Lord. And now, the blessing of God Almighty, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit stay with you and remind with you always, amen. Y que la bendición de Dios omnipotente, el Padre, el Hijo y el Espíritu Santo sea con cada uno de ustedes y more con ustedes ahora y siempre. Amén. Thank you so much.
You may be seated. We are taking you to church today, aren't we? All right, we're almost to the end, trust me. I'd like to call to the stage Mayor Brian De Peña, and I also like to call a very dear friend of Lawrence. Quiero llamar aquí a Brian De Peña, alcalde Brian De Peña, y una amiga de nosotros, a good friend of Lawrence, una buena amiga mía y suyo también, suyo. A good friend of ours and a good friend of yours, Isabel Meléndez.
Oh my God, you are like my son. Para mí es un privilegio, es un privilege and a big surprise in my life to get the key of this great city. You are, you're gonna have, you're gonna have, this is the key. I've been here in this city of Lawrence since 1959. Brian, God bless you, and this is the key. This is your key, okay? Because all of you, all of you did it, and we had the great, the great and the best mayor in our city.
Thank you, thank you.
You have your key, and I do. Well said. You are a mayor. You are a mayor. I have lived in this city 59 years. And this one is the best for me.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Isabel. Thank you. La llave del pueblo. Is the people's key. It's not mine. It's you. Thank you.
It has the best. El mejor alcalde que vamos a tener en este momento. Un beso, un beso para... A kiss, a kiss for a mayor. A kiss for everyone, those that really went out and we select the right person to be a mayor. Y aquello gracias a todos aquellos que salieron a votar y escogieron al alcalde que tiene el pueblo.
I don't know, I think deep down inside, she probably wanted that, right? That truly is the key to the city, right? That's the key to City Hall and his office. So ladies and gentlemen, damas y caballeros, this concludes the swearing-in of the Lawrence 61st Mayor. Esto concluye la juramentación del 61-décimo alcalde de Lawrence. El alcalde Brian De Peña, gracias, thank you, and good night. Buenas noches.
Ahora, como que dice ahora.
Le toca al pueblo.
Now is the people's turn.